Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need you to table homework.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can I just remove it, or you want it tabled?
Actually, remove it.
Okay, good. I make a motion to remove homework club advisor from the consent agenda.
Sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which now consists of item 3A1.
Have a second? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Eric?
I'm pleased to announce Girls' Bar Cee across Coach Bill Blackmore.
Okay. Update on dispute, disputed funds with the town?
Yes, at the time when we left to print, the funds were still in dispute subsequent to last night's meeting. The county council did vote, took two separate votes to have the treasurer return, or allow us to have access to the $367,000, $165,000, as well as the $243,000 and $92,000. We now have access to those funds, and as you can see, we received a letter from the town treasurer, Mrs. Surratt, indicating such. And as a result of that, I've spoken to Attorney Robinson and told him to withdraw the complaint, since the matter's been resolved tamically.
I'd like to just take the opportunity to thank Counselor Pelletier for taking the lead on this last night. He put in the agenda request for the item to be heard in open session, and he did make the motion each time for the confiscated funds to be returned to us. And I appreciate his, as I said, taking the lead.
And I'll just, you know, hopefully now we can all move forward. It's been a lot of time spent on both sides on the issue. The answer, the questions been answered, asked and answered, so to speak. So now we can move on to things like worry about education for our kids. Hopefully, we can move forward.
Danielle? Any comments?
I do hope that we can all come together and that the issue of bifurcation itself has now been laid to rest, because that was essentially the, at the heart of the issue, that a total amount must be approved for the schools sufficient to run them. And it is not illegal to try to separate a local appropriation from state funds. So I hope that we can all agree on that now, that it's been taken through the courts, all appeals have been exhausted, and that no more attempts will be made to bifurcate school appropriations in the future.
Sally, do you want to talk about the resolve last night?
No, I don't have a copy of it yet.
Okay.
So I want to wait until I get a copy of it. But it was similar to the one last year that was on about if we don't, if we don't get the vote, if we don't get the money, then we have to go back and ask for it again, similar to that. But we'll have to wait for the language, because it's very specific. That was made by last night. But I will second what Carol said and thank Mr. Pelletier, because when I went Friday to check the backup, and I was going through all the papers and all the papers, and it wasn't there, and nothing was there, and finally, the last page was like town council, future litigation, and all these different things. And I said, oh, no, they're not going to address it. And I was very concerned. And then I flipped one more page, and I saw Mr. Pelletier had put it on an open session. Last night, it didn't end up being an open session, but it doesn't really matter, because the vote was taken out after executive session into open session. And they voted to six to one to give us the money back. And so it was, it was a good night.
Also, just for planning purposes, we have a meeting on the 24th, and by that time, we'll have any resolves that may be submitted, the deadline will pass by then, and we will be able to review them prior to the May 1st meeting. So whatever resolves are officially put on the ballot, as well as any other ballot, I'm sorry, any other budgets, other than the budget committee's budget, we'll also be able to review by then.
Last night was the deadline for the town council or the school committee to put numbers on. Actually, in the timeline, it was Sunday, but of course, it carried to Monday. And the 17th is the last day for an elector to put one on. So after that, we'll know. Now, the question came up about the public hearing, which is one of the questions we had during the whole process. And we had asked that if everything's final on the 17th, and then there's a public hearing, which is a very important word, because it means you take input, and then you can change your mind on something, but you can't change anything after the 17th. So I asked Mr. Tights, I stood up and I asked him the question, if that were true, do you really have to call it an informational meeting? It's not a public hearing, because nothing can be changed. So that was, he said, yes, that was true. So that's one of the questions we had asked, and it was disposed of, if you remember.
Right, but at that meeting, I believe everyone has to be present to answer any questions, even though it can't be changed.
Right.
I think we need to be present, as well as the council, at that meeting. Also, I believe the budget committee-
The budget committee, the town council, the school committee.
I believe the budget committee has their own meeting for the 25th.
They're going to have one separately.
Their readout, I believe, at 7:30 on the 25th, to go over their, the whole budget, and again, provide time for any questions people may have.
And the budget committee did an outstanding job. We were there, you were all there for three or four of the meetings, answering questions. And I think it was a good process, they went through every number. Laura Eppke did an amazing job, turning every rock and stone over. So the budget committee will be at that meeting, and the town council, and the school committee at the public hearing, those are the bodies.
So last night, the town council voted to endorse the budget committee's budget?
No, no.
But they, they chose not to submit another number?
No, they're not going to submit another number. But they have to send the paperwork up to the municipal affairs. But Mr. Lambert was, said that it'll, he'll say, this is the budget committee's budget. This isn't the town council's budget, because they did differ in some ways, like the landfill, the 168 for the landfill was taken out by the budget committee, different things like that. The bottom line was just about the same, but things were moved around. But they didn't put their own budget in, they just put a resolve in, the budget, the town council did. And we'll get a copy of that language as soon as we can.
So as of right now, we're, there's only the budget committees?
Right now, just the budget.
My hope was then that the town council, and the school committee, and the budget committee will all be publicly supporting the same budget.
Right.
And we could all then come together behind that one budget.
Yeah.
I know there was some discussion last night, because Mrs. Black asked me to attend. There was a lot of discussion on the part of the council regarding, not so much the bottom line, but items in the budget. You know, some things were given that weren't, I don't want to say weren't asked for, but things were given that were high priority, and the council had questions about certain aspects, but they didn't question the bottom line. So, you know, I would like to thank, as you pointed out in the sermon, that they, everyone would be behind the budget committee's number, even though they had some. And some of the concerns they brought up seemed to be very legitimate, but we've been on the other end of those as well, in years past, where budget, the budget committee has made recommendations to our budget that we didn't necessarily agree with, or like, but, you know, we adjusted our budget accordingly. So it wasn't like, in my mind, it wasn't anything out of, historically out of the ordinary that happened last night. I mean, it seemed to be, you know, when you ask for something, and you put time into building your budget, you know, and the budget committee says no to something, you know, it's normal to say, how come? And, you know, look for some answers. And it seemed to be the general focus of last night's discussion about it. But they didn't say they were going to put a second budget up.
But the important thing for tonight is, our budget is the same budget as the budget committee's budget. We agree on the same number, the school committee and the budget committee.
And on the 24th, I would probably ask the committee to vote to endorse that, you know, that we take, let people know that-
So people will understand when they see it.
Vote of support, yeah.
Yanni, do you have anything?
No, I don't know, maybe Doug could remind us. So now, based, based on this money coming back to us, how this is impacting our financial situation?
Unfortunately, we won't officially know until the audit for the next year is complete, and those funds would have been moved back and added to our balance. But I'm proceeding with the 367, 165, and the 243, 092, in essence, have been added to our, our fund balance. And of course, we've discussed using the-
The 367 will go to the sewer.
Right, now we can afford to pay for the onsite wastewater treatment.
We can sleep at night knowing we have the funds available for that. Regarding the 243, I would just say to the committee, we would need to see how the vote goes at the FTR. Those funds, I would like to think that at some point, we could use some of them to purchase some things that we had to cut out of our budget, not necessarily use all of it, but maybe pick some things, prioritize on the cut list, and put that, you know, purchase some of those things, especially if they're one-time items like the computers.
And the reality is, now our balance is about one and a half percent of what our annual operating budget is, which isn't excessive by any means, so I would probably recommend to be conservative.
I would say we'd be cautious and, and just put that 243, you know, just like we don't have it for now, and then revisit it when it's time. So we are able to, like to answer Yanni's question, we're able to meet our financial obligation for the sewage treatment plan. So we're no better, you know, not worse, where we should have been all.
And I would recommend we also keep a contingency for the wastewater treatment facility, because we don't know what the bids are, how they're going to come in.
Right.
So we need to be cautious.
I think it's extremely important that we announce this publicly, and only here, but maybe write in some form a letter to explain what this, what this means, because people say, okay, well, they just got $600,000.
Right.
Extra.
I can write a short, I can write a short letter to the editors of the various papers.
Yeah, I think that's really important, too, because you don't want people to think we don't need what we asked for.
Yes, if you haven't been following it, you're right, Yanni.
Yeah.
People might say, oh, you just got a windfall of $600,000. What do you ask in, I know, for $900,000 for, you know, for next year? So that's an excellent point.
And on that point, Mr. Fiore, what is the number that we cut in the end, as we went through the budget process?
Our total cuts from the beginning of the process to the end?
From the beginning of the process to the last submission.
It was nearly a million dollars, a significant portion of which was capital.
Yeah. We cut a lot out.
Yeah, because, because there was a statement made that we were just asking for that money, like we never cut anything.
We cut 290,000 on our first meeting, right off the top of my head.
Right, I saw that.
Yeah, I would say between 750,000, and maybe higher than that, just off the top of my head.
Right. So what, can we just get that number, so we can, and then the other thing is, the-
Because in order to get there, I'm sorry, Mrs. Black, but there's people, they haven't been following it. We did have to make staffing reductions to get to that 3.6.
Oh, I know. That's right.
It didn't come without any hardship.
Exactly.
You know, on our-
And that's important for people to know, we just didn't say, we need all this, and we're not going to look at it or drill down.
And we do have the final version of the budget on our website, so anyone can see the line item budget that we prepared.
Well, for example, right, and we left on the ta, on the table, so to speak, the coach, science coach, we didn't get, you know, that was left, that was 38,000, you know, right off the top of my head. The computers, you know, we could cut, the chairs, you know, that's another 150,000, the auditorium seats and the computers. So I'd say that was a fair amount, somewhere around 700.
And the other thing is, the increase was the three-legged stool, Mr. Fiore, and one of those, that's the pension, the health care, and the special needs?
And also, we didn't have the ability to draw down on prior year reserves.
Right, that we usually did.
Triad, right.
But certainly pensions and special ed were the two other significant components.
That was two-thirds of our increase.
Right. So it's not irresponsible things, it's things out of our control, and we do pay the pension, you know?
Right, as we said, our pension's a hun, you know, it's paid.
Yeah.
You know, there's no underpayment, at least, you know, from the local, as far as what our contribution is.
But that's the information I think we're going to have to keep getting out every day and every week now, so when people come to vote, they'll, they'll understand the process and-
Salary.
Because we're not going to be able to be there and just, and talk about it.
You know, and it was unfortunate, you know, you mentioned that, because last night, again, just happening to be there, all those questions that the council had, had we had the FTM, all could have been addressed, and things could have possibly been changed. Now, you know, everything's etched in stone.
Well, that's why I think it's important that the school committee went, the school department and the principals and curriculum director and Al went to the meetings, the budget committee meetings, so we could answer the questions when they came out, because if they ask questions, you don't have the answers, well then, you know, you can't back up.
Then they make assumptions.
You can't back up why you need the money.
And there was a big issue over the landfill issue. And not to judge it, because I'm not an expert by any means, but it's obvious the budget committee thought X, council thinks Y, but that they never had that, the conversation was never held, unfortunately. So at least, at least put everything on the table.
I do have the capital amount, Mrs. Black, it was 787,308 of just capital from the beginning of the process to the end.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
787,308. And that combined with the operations, I think brings us over a million dollars.
And I believe you started to say, Mr. Fiore, that our budget does not include any across-the-board salary increases.
Teachers and administrators, once again, are zero.
Except for Council 94, which was the give, they gave us a zero.
Previously, giving back.
It was just a give-back.
Right, and teachers and administrators have been without across-the-board salary increase for how many years now?
Four, some five.
Four to five years.
Depending on where they came into the test.
I think that's-
Our administrators are fifth, I'm five years, all our administrators will be four years.
That's important for the public to know.
And as well.
Our salary line actually decreases from the-
Yes, that's a minus.
From 2012 to 2013.
That's the first time I've ever seen that happen.
I've never seen that before, no.
So our salary line has decreased since last year.
And when we did do some research salary-wise, we are on the bottom. We are in the dead last, or like 19 out of 20 communities have reported to Riasque.
For teacher salaries.
For teacher salaries. So, I mean, we, it's not something to be proud of, but we are certainly not overspending.
Right, but, but for those who might suggest that our budget is bloated due to salary increase, that is absolutely inaccurate. Thank you.
And I'd like to mention that you, Mr. Eric, opened up your contract, you didn't have to, to give what the teachers were giving, just to show the leadership at the time.
My wife reminds me all the time, Mrs. Black.
I'm sorry. Okay. 2012.
Yes, our strategic plan, you have a copy of the strategic plan, and if you went through it, a lot of it is very similar, because when we got together to draft a proposed revision, or do our revisions, we weren't comfortable, because we didn't have a vote from the committee to completely overhaul the strategic plan. In other words, as you notice, our assurances, our mission statement, vision statement, that hasn't changed, because we didn't feel, A, we still thought it was appropriate, but we also felt that, you know, we weren't empowered to really do that. I felt that our mission was to take a look at our objectives and redo those and present them to the committee, so we can look at it for the next three years. And on the, really, and we had a couple of options, we had a very good facilitator from the Department of Education, Peg Votto, who worked for us for two days on this, and she showed us different versions of ones that she's personally helped write. And we felt that this version of the four objectives with the strategies as bullets was much, it's ambitious, but yet it's not overwhelming when you read it. And as I said in my cover letter, we do these things throughout the course of the year, and we report out to you, like we do every June, you know, we go on and explain what we're doing with construction and facilities and things like that. But here is what we came up with, the members that served, that volunteered to serve, we felt that these objectives, these four objectives are things that we are important to our district, and that, that we need to work on, you know, from now until 2015. And as you see in the first one, improve each student's achievement in ELA, arts, English language, arts, math, and science, as measured by a variety of state and local performance assessments, that's the objective. And you can see some of the strategies beneath it. Notice, again, things that we've already been talking about, our move to the Common Core assessments, how we align that with our curriculum, these are all things that we need to do in order to be up to date and compliant with all the new changes associated with the shift to the Common Core and the PARC assessments. The second point, the second objective, recruit, support, retain staff that acquire and apply professional knowledge and behaviors, effectively promote and implement the mission of Tiberian School Department. We did a lot already, as Carol can attest to, and Deb, if she was here, would too. We did a lot already with our hiring policies, revising them. We felt that we didn't need to revise them again, but we felt that the word monitor, you know, as changes, you know, if things came up with state regs, or something that we wanted to add, we're still, we still need to try to find ways to deal with PD, so it's job indebted, so that we're not pulling teachers out of the classroom in order to do it, which is our current model, our delivery model, and that's due to a lot of funds where we can't pay teachers, you know, have no school for a day, or send entire groups, or entire departments, or entire grades off-site for training. We have to do it currently, you know, in-house, and we said we needed to explore, that there were other ways, more efficient ways to do that. Also, to implement the Rhode Island educator evaluation model, which we're currently doing now.
And which has recently been adjusted.
Well, it hasn't been officially adjusted. It's been, it's the-
And it was announced that it will be adjusted, is that the idea?
Yeah, that's, we haven't gotten official word that it's been adjusted, there've been minor, I call them minor tweaks. The idea, it's still going to be very comprehensive, because they want every teacher, still.
Every teacher, every year, multiple?
As of right now, no, they say they're looking at it, because we just finished our training sessions, the administrators and myself, as I went to a separate, I went to both, and everything we kept hearing was, they're going to modify it, they're going to try to, they're listening to us, you know, for all the districts.
That's what the paper reported.
Right, so hopefully, that's the case. We haven't, I, I've seen them as well, but it's not official yet, as far as, we haven't gotten anything written saying, here are the official changes. Because we're still doing it. We're still in the first year of that process, so I don't think they can make the changes without having all the data yet, because we still haven't done the final evaluations, and we're a partial implementation district. In other words, we only have a percentage of our staff doing it. They, being right, wants all the data from all the districts, and they won't receive that until June. You know, number of teachers that were deemed proficient, or need improvement, or whatever, they're going to take all that information, and then I think they're going to issue final, final changes to it. They don't want teachers' names, but they just want to know number of teachers that are exemplary, distinguished, and so on. And then I think they're going to see where everyone fell in that first year, to see how the process went. What we hear is, from our teachers, is they don't mind the process, they like it. It does take more time for them to produce the artifacts, it's more from an administrative standpoint, trying to get all the evaluations done and have all the follow-up conferences. What we're looking into, Diana and I have talked about, the principals, we still need a final approval from the person that we'd like to be our ISP, who will be, who will be able to help us with the evaluations, and that person's, Mrs. Bolton, who's sitting to my left.
Oh.
And we'd like to train her, and have her stay with us until next year to help with the process. So we would have a very capable administrator working with us, so that we're comfortable with, so that will help, you know, Mary's willing to take it on. But, you know, that, we'll see how that goes tomorrow. And the others, and just the other objectives, you can see, if you have any questions, you know, we talked about in number three, increased community sense of ownership. We think we do a lot, you know, already with the Prevention Coalition and everything that Sally's involved with, with school's career. We want to continue to do that, working with our, various community organizations. We've improved our communications, but we still need to, you know, continue doing that. We've done a lot in the last two or three years with Connect Ed and newsletters.
And the new website.
And the new website, which we're still tweaking to, you know, hammer out. We believe another area of the group that presented this, is that we need to strengthen our community service program at the middle school, so that kids have more opportunities, and they're more aware of the program, so that when they come to the high school, they just don't need the all 75. Maybe they can punch out, you know, at least 20 by the time, because a lot of students at early ages are doing community service. We need to try to capture that in the coming years. And this was Sally's favorite, provide multiple learning pathways which connect career, service, learning to our local and global community. Right, Mrs. Black?
Yes, and when I was at the pizza cook-off, it was wonderful to see that pathway still live, alive and well, and all the people from the surrounding restaurants, I thank for coming. It was really a good day.
I was kidding, Mrs. Black, in the process, saying, I hate that word pathways, because it's-
I had to bring Tiger himself to sit next to him to calm him down.
It's so overused, but we, we saw our, the error of our, I saw the error of my ways, and we kept it in there. And then technology, Mr. Natariani was also present. The first one is something really, if I could take ownership of any of these, which I wouldn't, I will with that first one, is that I believe in next year's budget, we need to hire a consultant to do a, a complete and thorough facilities study of the high school and the middle school, an independent company to come in and tell us what we need, from new windows, to changing the lights, to what do we do with our heating systems, because we really need, moving forward, we need that objective document, so when we do go to the committee, the budget committee and to the voters, it's not the school committee request, you know, saying we need it, it's not the superintendent saying we need it, it's not the principals, there'd be an independent firm, you know, that would be able to, that we could use those recommendations for. I think that'd be very helpful, since, you know, as we've talked about, the age of the schools are well-known, the high school was built in 66, and the middle school in 75.
And hopefully, that would highlight some opportunities for increased energy efficiencies.
Right, and how do, because these built, built, again, were built, they were efficient in 1966, and 1975, '76. Obviously, lots have changed over the last 30 years, so just having these big windows, you know, and these were replaced, I think, 15 years ago, before I got here, you know, those, just, they just need to replace with more efficient windows. But they all come with a price tag, and those are the types of things we need to, to talk about in the coming years. Maintain our maintenance plan, which we do have, update our technology, and again, this one will also be an ongoing and costly issue, especially with just keeping up with rides initiatives. Hopefully, we'll be able to, that bond will pass at the state level, and we'll get that 350,000, 360,000 to help support our infrastructure, so we can actually upload the data. Kind of be very helpful if that passes at the state level. But we felt that these were, based on our capacity that we have in the district, we felt that they meet our more, they meet our, they'll meet our needs, you know, for the next few years, the next two or three years. And I said I would present it to the committee for their review, so.
Do we need to take a vote?
I would like you to just vote to approve it, so that we, that they were on record, and then we'll put it online. And what we'll do is, and also, when we report out, it'll be easy for us, and I think for you to follow, and the public to follow, when we report out in June, objective one, here's what we've done.
That's what you want to see, right?
Without the timelines, you know, and this, and then objective two, this is what we've done. Obviously, objective one, we'll, we'll, again, teaching and learning, that's our most, that's why we're here, that's why we made it number one. So that's why we have more data on that than anything else, because that's what we do. And then we'll also, you know, update everybody as to where we are on the other objectives. I just think it's easier for everyone to follow, especially the public, who, you know, we talk about this, we talk inside baseball all the time, and sometimes it's not that easy for the average voter resident to follow along, if they choose to, to try to make it as simple as possible, for the uninitiated.
Ms. Hannah, would you like to mention the process a little bit?
Sure, I think that we had a well-represented committee of people to help with the updates, and one of the things that we were very cognizant of when we had Peg Votto come down, is that we wanted to know what changes were in the basic education program that we needed to update within here, and so she was able to bring those conversations in. And it was nice to update our plan so that it reflected what we're actually doing now, because so much had changed from when we had first done the plan.
Just two, right, two and a half years.
Right, and sometimes when I'm applying for grants, I have quote pieces from the strategic plan to show, you know, how the grant funding will support our strategic plan, so it's nice that it's updated and more aligned to current initiatives that we're working on.
And that's what I found, when we used to meet, it was all what we wanted to do, but now there's so much imposed on us, that we have to make sure we're doing, that we have to put those in.
Again, the lion's share of the requirements, and Peg, you know, we looked at the BEP, and we spent a lot of time talking about that and understanding it, and how what we're doing here will help us meet those goals as well, other than the BEP. Because the lion's share of it is right here in the first objective. Because although the lion's share of it is right here in the first objective.
Any of the principals, anything? No?
No, I, I like the community service component. I think if the students come up from the middle school with a certain number of hours, they've got an opportunity maybe to hook in with a mentor or another adult role model, which could influence them coming into high school. And then it would also lessen their obligation for a graduation requirement.
Less stress.
We're still dealing with seniors right now who are in the rears, you know, with community service. So I think it's really got a good opportunity on twofold, on the beginning of high school and towards the end, if we can have students coming in with more involvement with community service hours.
And also get the child, children more involved in the middle school, you know, instead of just going to class. Because there's not always a whole lot to do after school for kids. And if they, you know, just one day a week go to do something, that'll make them feel a little more bonded to the school as well.
And who will monitor that? Will it be the...
We have a middle school, believe it or not, we have a middle school coordinator.
Okay.
And Mrs. Kaufman's already started some communication.
I believe it's Mrs. Paul's.
Yeah, and she's working with her and the vice principal down there, I believe, right now, and try to notify parents about what's going on and how to get started a little sooner.
Oh, good, that's good. Okay.
So if the committee could just, I'm inclined to, to approve it, and we'll get on the website and continue working towards meeting those objectives.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the updated version of the school department's strategic plan as presented.
Do I have a second? Any more comments?
No, I'd just like to thank the committee members for their hard work. I know it takes a lot of time and effort to go through it all.
And the high schools going through there, we were really hard. Steve was, we had him tied to the chair because we were just ready to go into knee ask.
Right, at the same time.
And I said, you've got to be here for the strategic plan. And, you know, to his credit, he came, and obviously was a really productive member. But to all the people that were on the committee, you know, we thanked them. We did send out, you know, invitations, but people were just busy, and it was hard, you know. And we were able to corral enough folks together to, you know, get it done.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay. We can talk about the legislation for a minute?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What do you want me to talk about? I thought we were table.
Well, we're going to continue, we're still looking over it.
Yeah, what we have here is, there's three, there's really three sets of bills, there's a lot of them, but there's really four sets. One's layoffs, that deals with teacher layoffs, House 7272. There's one that deals with binding arbitration, House 716, 7617. And there's also, I believe, 7620 that deals with binding arbitration as well. And where's my, where's my third one? The third one is the Senate bill. We just have a lot of resolutions in here from the different communities. Yeah, we have binding arbitration.
And contract continuation.
And contract continuation is the third. That 7620 is for continued contract continuation for council 94 employees. So there's one for teachers, and there's one for council 94. And then the last one that I have is Senate 223, we have 2239, which is the school committee and superintendent's resolution that I have. That's the one we were trying to put together. Those are the four. And then there are bills that marry each other. Carol, you asked me about some of the other ones. The House and the Senate have mirror bills.
Right.
So we'll have all of them, because we didn't print them out correctly for our next meeting, but we'll have them organized that way. Binding arbitration.
Right.
Contract continuation. And then most of them, and Jan was nice enough to send us most of these, you know, through his activity in the School Committee Association. We would need to do our own.
We'll make up our own.
We'll have our own for each one.
Representative Edwards said he'd come and speak to us the night we do it.
Because they are very important, and we really need to let our elected officials know where we stand on a lot of these issues.
The one you mentioned, school committees and superintendents?
Yes, that's, I'm trying to, I have, that's 2239.
And what does it say about school committees and superintendents?
I'm trying to, I just have the resolution, so I'm...
It says we will no longer have some of our powers.
They want to take away your powers.
That's the contract ratification?
Yeah, I believe that's the one. They don't want you to, they want school committees...
We would negotiate, but not ratify?
The school committees would negotiate the contract, but the council would approve it, which...
Okay. That's the one we were missing the text on.
That really...
Yeah.
You either do it all, one does it all. You know, either the school committee's going to do it, or the town's going to do it. You can't have one body, in my opinion, do the negotiating, and then another group approve it.
But we'll get the language for all of it.
And we'll have that discussion. We'll have that discussion when we have the language, yeah.
At greater length on the 24th.
Okay. And then we'll write our own little resolution.
And take whatever positions, obviously, the committee would like to take.
And then submit them to our reps and senators. That will be good. And, because we have to, you know how one little word can change it, like that word "also"?
Mm-hmm.
My goodness, I can turn the world upside down. So we have to make sure that we look at all the words. Okay. Homeschooling approval, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, I'm just asking for the committee's approval for the request, homeschool the student, that's before you, middle school student.
Make a motion to approve the homeschooling approval?
Do I have a second?
Second to motion.
All those in favor? Okay. And we're going to have a spotlight on success the next time?
Yes, but we do have a couple of announcements that I would like to mention.
And then we'll have some announcements now?
Well, I'd like, we've got two right here.
Okay.
Like to point out, and I'll have Al get this on the website, Tiverton Education Foundation received requests, grant requests totaling $14,861 from teachers for various projects. As you can see, the foundation was able to fund $6,400 worth of those requests, so I want to thank all the members on the foundation for all the work they do, able to, you know, generate these funds to help, you know, meet these requests. And they're all, I'm sure if they had the funds, they would have granted all the, would have granted them in their entirety.
I just want to add, this is the list that I have in my packet anyways, for the high school, there were also requests from the middle school. So there's Mr. and Mrs.
Yeah, I just have the high school.
She's going to provide us with those, Mrs. Hannah. She provided us with this, Mrs. Larson did.
Yeah.
But she said she would have others another time.
Okay, that's a good point that Diane brought up. These are for the high school only, and there are this for the middle school.
It was about $21,000 in requests altogether.
Total. And we'll have the middle school for the next meeting.
And a lot of technology requests.
Mm-hmm.
And are these requests that were funded for activities that are part of our curriculum, or are they extracurricular activities, or a mix?
All the, all the technology requests, per our new policies, they had to go through our tech director.
Correct.
Al had to make sure.
Right, it was compatible, yes.
That it was compatible, but also was it linked to, you know, things that we're doing in the classroom? You know, except for obviously, the foundation donated $500 to help with the softball field, which is, I believe, almost finished up here at the middle school, the high school.
Yeah, I believe that was how all of the applications were looked at, is the number of students that would benefit. So if it was just a small number, they weren't as inclined to approve the grant, because they'd rather see the funding go towards initiatives that would benefit the broad number of students and be more connected to classroom learning.
Well, I would like to thank the Tiverton Education Foundation for their fundraising success and for their granting of these funds. Our students will certainly benefit in ways that would not otherwise be possible.
Absolutely.
Mr. Barrett, could you just read the little list, so the people will know?
Sure.
Because they won't know what we're talking about.
$2,000 was donated to the school newspaper, high school newspaper. $500 was donated to, again, construct the softball field here at the high school. $1,400 was donated to one of our tech ed teachers, students in implementing the STEM program here at the high school through the tech department. Eric Marks, our social studies department chair, received $1,100 for iPads, and I believe he requested $700, so they felt that...
They liked that.
They liked that idea, again. I'm sure it services, you know, just not a couple of students.
It's going to go to English, Mr. Barrett, as well?
Okay.
Because social studies in English, you're actually going to get two with that.
They had put in that they would share two departments, teachers sharing one iPad. So after looking at some similar proposals and pricing for different, you know, iPad 4 versus iPad 3, they felt that with $1,100, they might actually be able to get two.
$600 to our business department for future leaders, future business leaders of America. $464 to help pay for a field trip to the International Yacht Club, not yacht club, International Yacht Restoration Field Trip, which we got, were involved in last year. I believe two of our students, Steve, ended up working there over the summer.
Yes, they had full-time summer jobs.
That's wonderful.
As a result of that trip. And $350 to our culinary arts department for tables and stools. Just some, a brief sample, and again, we'll get these on the website.
And we'll get the middle school ones, yeah. That's good.
She said when they were through, she'd give us a copy.
That's wonderful. They do such a wonderful job. That's good.
And again, if anyone at home would like to donate funds to the Education Foundation, it is a tax-free organization, and you can get tax relief, and you can donate the money to whatever cause you'd like.
I think they're going to be involved again with the library at the high school, like they were last year, with the touch of truck and everything. So that'll be fun, a fun day.
With the June Library Fair.
The Library Fair and the Walkathon. That'll be great.
And my other announcement is, and I know Mrs. Bolton was anxious to get this in, so we got it into this meeting, Arts and Activities is a leading art, art education magazine in the country. And one of our students, Ava Rose Saret, has a nice little article that appeared there, and I just put it in there for your review. So another example of some of the fine work our students have done.
That is, that was very impressive.
So congratulations to Ava and her being published.
Imagine that. That's wonderful. Any other announcements? Mr. Fazek?
Mr. McKinnon did some informal fundraising with some push from some of the students on the school improvement team, and we're going to have a bike rack installed in front of the school, under the bus port, support about 15 or 20 bicycles for kids. There's a lot more kids riding bikes to school now.
It's a healthier lifestyle, and we should support it. That's wonderful.
Most of Obama will be very happy if it lets more...
Still need school buses for the rest of them.
I know. Anybody else?
Mrs. Black, along those lines, we've, we've been named a, a healthy employer through the Greater Chamber of Commerce and Blue Cross Blue Shield once again. So that was the third year we've been cited in a row, so I'd like to commend Mrs. Mendez in my office, as well as the wellness coordinator at Blue Cross. So we have received the Outstanding Award for 2012.
And of course, we can receive the award if we pay to attend.
Their dinner. We may pass on that.
And last time you, last time you invited me to receive it, and then I got a...
No, this is different, that was...
I got a bill. I got a bill for going.
That was... We didn't know that at the time.
That was a dirty trick.
Well, you figure you're getting an award from an organization.
Will you go represent the school? Of course I will.
And they actually were lunch, you don't have to pay for the lunch.
We'll be recognized in the May Rhode Island Monthly.
Thank you.
And just one other announcement, and this can come, we can also talk more about it on SOS, but Mr. McKinnon, Mr. Gaychuck, Mr. Landock, Mrs. Combra have volunteered their time, and they have formed a unified basketball team here at the high school for our special needs students who have some severe learning disabilities. And we've been, they got practice every week. Mrs. Black and I have been to the two home games so far. I believe there's two more home games remaining on the schedule, they play every Wednesday. They've got an away game this Wednesday, and in the next two weeks, after vacation, the next two Wednesdays, I believe, we're home, and we close out the season.
You should really try to come by, it's just so much fun.
It's a wonderful atmosphere.
Oh, my goodness.
We have the cheerleaders here, we have some, we have students who are great to help those students that need the help, actually getting up the floor and stuff.
Yes.
And to watch the kids on both teams interact.
It's wonderful, and all the parents are there, it's so much fun.
No matter how bad your day is that you have.
It's true. It's really true.
You go there and watch, and whatever was bothering you, you forget about it when you're done. And I just want to commend those teachers and...
And they're high-fiving all the way up the court with the other team, it's like so exciting. It's so much fun.
Wesley had a real sniper. He had a little girl score like 18 points or something like that.
Oh, yes, she was amazing.
She was very good.
She didn't miss?
She didn't. Much to our demise. But again, if anyone can attend that, they play, they start the games at 3:30, quarter four, so it's a wonderful experience and another great example.
I just want to mention, Mr. and Mrs. Landock organized Special Olympics, and I guess I was, I was attending the ceremony on last Sunday, where it was so many volunteers from Tiverton kids, basically. All of this was basically staffed by Tiverton High School students. And it was very touching, and it was just incredible what these kids were able to do with children with disabilities. And they got compliments from people who normally handle these children on daily basis. And now, to some of them, the biggest reward was just a question, how did you make him, or how did you make her do this? I was trying for such a long time. And this basically, from a kid to a kid, and some of the things he did with a kid was, was his handicapped children, it's, will be carried through to their daily routines, because some of these interactions actually worked more effectively than what was done with them. And obviously, a lot of these kids, they all got diplomas, and Mrs. Landock contacted the press to find out if they could come and basically report on that, but they chose not to come, they were not available, which was a very sad thing, because things like that should be reported to the community. And I think this whole, this whole initiative is going to be continued, and it looks like more and more kids are being involved. It's a wonderful thing which is happening.
It is.
It was, I don't, I don't, I think they tried to contact the kind of time, so it's not the blame on you, Marcia, but you got an email too?
Uh-uh.
It was a Sunday. And it was, yes, it's, who's this, this gym, which is like a new gym, which is on Main Road just past...
Yeah, I know, okay.
Yeah.
Gymnastics?
Gymnastics, yeah. And now they will, I think now they will move outdoors.
Last outdoor.
That was just incredible.
And the other night, they had the tribute to Mr. Akwet, our amazing basketball coach. From six to seven, the alumni played, and Mr. Lake played in that game. And then the next session was the teachers against the students, and he also played in that game. He was actually the star of the night, he was amazing. And they had shirts, t-shirts with Mr. Akwet's face on it. And they also had his face on a stick, and they auctioned it off. And I got up to a certain amount, and then I figured it was Mr. Akwet or the turkey, then the ham for Easter, so I lost the auction.
You don't want store it towards, Mrs. Black. You've got to know how to outbid.
I did, I lost the auction to another gentleman, but it was an amazing night to see all the alumni come. A lot of my children's friends were there.
I don't think Jerry would like to be compared with the turkey, because it's not a competition. To lose to a turkey, that's not good.
The ham and turkey came first, and I was watching.
They had to.
You couldn't go home without it.[1766.82]